I think I've said.
Really, girlfriend?
I thought I heard one.
Rip?
Yeah.
Hey, I'd like to call the City of Twin Oaks, Board of Alderman Media, November twenty and twenty-four. Stand for Pikeville. Would you like to lead us to the.
United States of America, to the Republic, for which your stance, your nation, and your God, is this law, liberty, and justice for all.
On roll, please.
Delgo?
Here.
From the mid part?
Here.
Eisenbauer? Air Fortune?
Here. Okay, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. There are no changes to the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. For the agenda. There. On favor? Close. Agenda is approved. Any citizens comments? Go on to.
Ask to relay comments. Or bring that over at the end?
At the end. During the discussion.
Right.
Consent agenda, Board of Alderman, regular meeting minutes, November the sixth. Close session minutes, November sixth. Close session, November fourteenth. Bills list from November second to November fifteenth. And credit card statement for offer to the board. Questions or discussions on any of those items? I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion through the consent agenda.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Consent agenda is approved. Board of committees, please, Officer Wainer.
Right, so the month of October, we had thirty-two radio calls, hundred and forty-nine silks initiated, generated six reports, twenty traffic stops. We had one DWI arrest misdemeanor. Four accidents, one on one forty-one under Crescent, two Big Ben one forty-one, and one fourteen-ten. And we had a stealing by fraud over a thirteen-hundred Big Ben, and I love the living point, adding two hours on the back. Fraud? Fraud, yes. Online fraud.
Say something different than we've been experiencing?
No. Same. I mean, it's, it's. Individual got. I won't say catfish, but due to purchasing something online, which never shows up. Seller, not all ties. So it's. I don't want to say it's common, but it's more common than it is the online issue. Yes.
Doctor Trent.
Very.
The other Portuguese?
Thank you.
Thanks. First major port, yeah. Evening all.
Oh, welcome.
Good to be here.
Where else would you ever be?
Nowhere. We had a long and productive meeting, actually, in our committee. First thing we did was reviewed the survey that April had been working on, and it looks excellent. Y'all agree? That'll be a real process in terms of starting to hear the voice of the community in terms of what they're looking, what for the park, how often they attend, what kind of services they like and so forth. We then reviewed the updates on the electrical. Mayor have to be with us, so he walked us through what's going on with the electrical down in the park, and that's a number of excellent updates. And then, and most of the time we spent was reviewing and improving the calendar for next year, which I think you all have a copy of at this point. A few, a few changes. Tried to move the movie nights a little closer towards the summer. This has been chilly, but I think they're getting to be pretty popular events. The other thing is that we kind of have a challenge to come up with at least one event of the month. So we've added a few for next year, which will then basically add us at one event per month. But the three events that we've added are January seventeenth, we're gonna have a little smarts and pop hotlet event here at the courthouse. And, and that's kind of a placeholder. We'll see how it goes. It's on, it's on a Friday night, so we'll, we'll see how it's intended. But we kind of have an idea of trying to do something a little, little more aggressive in the future. Obviously, we didn't have much time to put it together this year, but we, we kind of like to move towards something like an outdoor festival of some sort that helps people break up the winter a little bit.
Is this outdoors?
Yeah, well, I ended up doing it out here on patio with the fire pit. Well, weather permitting. Well, we come inside. Exactly. Handle everything inside for you.
Empire. Yeah.
Correct. And then, March fourteenth, we're working on having some sort of a St. Patrick's event that might involve a pub crawl, or to check with the liquor store about maybe Irish whiskey tasting. Try and make sure it's all legal, if you have the, the, the amount of liability. And then, finally, in November, we're going to try and put on the first annual St. Patrick's event. That's right. So we certainly handle a lot of things. You know something?
Yeah.
And everybody around here seems to really like their thought, but now maybe some, you know, challenges out there where people.
See, it's a lot to be beat.
So those are the three events. And then, finally, the last thing that we've been working on, of course, is the lighting, the Christmas light, lighting in December. The company that's coming out to do the lighting is coming out this Saturday. They don't want any help, so we'll try and make them do their, their work. But then, on the following Monday, the twenty-fifth, a number of us on Park Petty, as well as anybody else that's interested, we're gonna actually try and do the lighting on the bridge. Because that wasn't included in our, our quote from the lighting company. And that's it for me. Any questions, comments? Glad to be with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Say, I'm answering your question. So we have the October thirty-first financial report for the ten months. The balance sheet shows over two million dollars liquid assets on the cash, definitely positive, that's pretty much. I think it's been running unbalanced, floating over two-point-two million at this point. But down here, those, the capital, the, 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 for the next couple months. Page three is the revenues and expenditures for ten months. And if you can see, still taxes, and you can see that on the next page, also a detail of it. Still taxes are down during the last year for the ten months. But that's a distribution issue. And November is gonna be way out of the potential of November to see it. Way above the November of two thousand twenty-three, so it's, it's, we expect to be right on the budget.
You said for October?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, but I, I think I said that we had already seen November, because I knew October was gonna be down. But, you know. In order not to, no need to put our professional services contracts. Uh, no. So, uh, the, there's really no, not a whole lot to say about the, the business licenses that have come in from this year, or about, so, but higher than last year. And we, we do have the insurance reimbursement in the revenue, so that, that gives about, you know, obviously gonna be paid out, but it's, it's gotta be a little better than, than maybe the other ones. On the expenditure side, like I said, about capital improvements, they'll need to be, will be back here in the next couple months. Otherwise, pretty much close to budget, and we have a couple of fluctuations that we talked about in the, in the past. We've, uh, from fluctuating from a year ago. The administrative area is down about seven percent in expenditures, and that's because of the employee turnover. City clerk condition. The goal is down a little bit from what was last year. At those insurance, so that provides for a lot of that fluctuation. Otherwise, police pretty much expected about eight-point-seven percent parts, eight percent, approach eight-point-seven. So the resident services is about twenty thousand above, but it was last year. That's calling up about thirty-three hundred than over what it was a year ago at this time. The winter lighting, about twenty-one hundred, the problem is the timing issue there. And, and we have said, as we talked about, we spent about sixteen thousand more this year getting stolen ice removal. That was the liquor of the January February issue. So. I said the capital, if you look at the budget figure of where we are budget-wise, we're pretty much right on budgets. Expecting to be right at that, about two million dollars on that level at the end of the year. All, all. Questions for Dave? Okay, thanks, sir. I'll be back later. Hey, John? John's gonna give us an update on the insurance claims for the roof.
All right, we have to take our, very likely. All the business you have, are you?
No, they're.
We're gonna do, do, take my, because I can tell it's a, an insurance claim. When these bids are paid out, I. So, probably get that off insurance.
Are you no insurance?
Yeah, that was the way they structured to have bid done as that pitch. So how each that we have. If they'll go back to like, yeah, if there's much are all over here.
What is, I, I guess I don't understand what's the big, what difference does it make?
The roofers?
Yeah.
Well, they give us the insurance office. You give them your insurance information, they contact the insurance office, they hash out what the insurance is gonna pay for because of materials. There's a loss, gain of it. I'm just gonna split it. I don't know what I'm doing. I don't.
Sounds to me like they don't want anybody looking over their shoulder. Questioning their bids. So, so the insurance company adjuster will come out, look at it. He will basically tell the insurance company what he thinks needs, or tell the roofing company what he thinks needs to be done.
Add in the roofing.
And then they, they give an estimate of work based on what the insurance adjuster lets prove. And they don't want to work with any insurance.
No, they do. They don't mind doing it. It is that that's how you have to start. You've got to go through the insurance, and work on an insurance plan. Because once you give them your insurance information, they contact the insurance office. They start hashing out what's gonna be safe. They're gonna replace it with the same material, but if we want to do any upgrade, that's on us.
So we would need to select a contractor before we put them in the touch of our insurance. So they, the insurance company is not going to go through three different contractors for us. They want, they want us to have already vetted and selected a contractor for them, but the insurance company will work out.
John, it's Gallagher, brother, who's the, on the roof? He, he been on the roof?
Yeah, but, you know, look, he only bid on the shingle and the metal. He didn't bid on the platter. He didn't point the detail like this, Rashford. Sure, it's right. It's from. He only let the roof protect it, and he only let, oh, good, good, I got blood.
So if we, we say, okay, we, we would like to work it down, then we determine we just put our claims into it. Then, based upon what they agree with, then they'll know how much it is. Correct. I felt that expert seemed to know what they were talking about. But I guess, question is, from, that's the way the process works. How would I have the ability to really look at three or four different roofing companies and make a decision without any idea what work is gonna be done? Who would get on that? Right? I just.
But from expert areas that I gave, that's what you provided, I mean. The damage.
Yep.
And, uh. All their top of the supply sheet.
Right.
These people know where we are, what's this house is in Valley Park, and something else is in Baldwin. So I better know about Twin Oaks. I figured, believe that in your galaxy lately. Yeah. Crescent Avenue to Valley Park and thirteen eighty-nine, they've been involved. My local experts, exteriors, left at the meeting, but he, he was so detailed that it seems to be like they're looking at the long term there. They're not just looking at patching the, the damage. They're, they're looking at actually changing the, changing the slant of the roof.
Well, they identified deficiencies that anybody else did.
Right. I think the insurance company were looking at it differently. Yes. Or not. I wouldn't expect the insurance.
I wouldn't expect them to allow the changes, but the insurance company, from what I'm understanding, give you the, they need a lot of money to test.
Sure.
And you get a company in here, they assess it, they go back to the insurance company, they, no. This is damaged. This needs to be replaced, and needs to be replaced with this material. And they do all the fighting.
And then, I think it will eventually come back to us, where the insurance company is going to say that we have agreed to this much, if you want to proceed with it, it doesn't stop. Which I'm okay.
And act like me, I don't know. Well, is that unreasonable?
No, I don't think so. Just trying to figure out how these guys work. Can't fix. We want to fix for longer, and they're, they're the ones that know the difference. Uh, we move forward. Do we, do we feel comfortable with the guy that came in? Seem to know where he's.
I don't know. Way through, which is a, that's a problem. Fly down the road.
So once we give him the go-ahead. He contacts our adjuster. Correct.
Yeah.
We're not real, we're not really giving him the go-ahead to do the job.
No, I'm saying you sign a contract, right now, just get, get him with him. You could all own. And that basically has to be on, just get out of that hand, get that all on.
So I, I guess I'm gonna recommend that we start the process. What are they called?
It's just been only for this deal.
Belt rock, perhaps? Belt, oh, which? No, he had, he had belt rock dentured. This is just a report. The belt property was like ninety thousand.
Uh, no, that was twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah. Twenty thousand. But there again, that changed.
Yeah. And the insurance company will say, well, we'll prove this, 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 this. Out there.
This is just like what I, what I had.
This was the report that I asked.
Yeah, and, and, I started period.
I asked him to give us some information on items, belt hurts, kind of out, combined with that. We need a motion to put this forward. Motion to move forward with the expert in exteriors. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Close. Great. We will notify him to push forward with the insurance.
All right. Uh, and then, that's drop that, and then take traffic.
We're happy with it?
Yeah. It really, yeah, uh, price me down.
Rip? Okay, I'm there now.
Yeah, no, I mean, not a whole lot. And, um.
What you do to it? Right, no?
No, come to find out. The guy at your place, I know.
Live with that.
Yeah. We went to go back every day. So. And then that foot, one of our followers in the shop, get repaired. But they came back and said, two hundred and eleven dollars for his repair.
Big floor?
Yeah. Which is a good enough. But you're dealing with twenty-year-old floor. One foot.
Twenty-two years.
Kind of busy.
Right back.
So we got a nice word.
Yeah. So I priced out a new one. I think that one, you have a head.
It's on my desk. It was like six hundred and fifty bucks, I think.
Yeah, and that, that's what it's from all. Then I went to A and M Lawn Equipment, their six thirty case, which they could add as well, which is ten, five acres here.
And so, back back?
Yeah.
The big one?
It's medium size, they had a bigger one out in eight-five hundred, how they have a ninety thousand here. Seven-five hundred. There you go. Whatever you guys want to do, I'll find it. Want to just fix that one, one eleven minute. We're close from there.
Two hundred, two hundred's a lot to put into.
It's with twenty-year-old.
Twenty-year-old.
I think it makes sense to do it.
Won't blow you over.
No. Thinking that nine dollars, Jerry, one will.
Yeah. Looking on the back of the.
Remember when we had, uh, Katie?
Yeah.
I put that eight-five one floor on that, fired it up, she hit that, she's walking around like an apple. That was that. And then the last, the very last page is, uh, you know what I done? Last one, I'm not gonna share it, far.
Yes.
Back, twenty-year-old.
Uh, I think, okay. Yes, uh, I was in the park earlier today. I think it was a steel, we have steel edge trimmer. Yeah. It's on the bridge, it's back behind the, it's on the ledge. I don't think anybody saw it. I had a look over, forgot about it, focus now, but it's, it's. Is it up there? It's a edge trimmer. It was cutting the grass, cutting the grasses. Okay, that's all about. I mean, I didn't do anything with it, because I didn't know, maybe it was, somebody was wanting to get something, I, I love the work part. Learning, it's, it's on the, it's on the bridge, um, rather, directly down.
Great.
You think I?
I think you check your back.
Business.
Roofing, we may be able to purchase this CD, so.
See, John, this. In our. In our.
Trying to get in the button.
Go on.
He's just gonna play himself.
Hey, resolution twenty-four dash eighteen.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a third amendment, free matter of a hobby service, heat or mowing service.
We're, uh, pretty down with the quality.
We've had them for, I think, going on ten years now, so we. We talked about, um, a few meetings ago, I brought up that we could go out to bid, wanted to, at this point, we don't move along, but everybody was pretty happy with the service, electing not to, and just get their, you know, most of the, a three-year extension.
This is the one, that's the hillside, it's a lot of city boards.
On the mowing, being.
It's always looking very, how do you do it? Well, well, it's terrible.
Okay, there are motions to adopt four dash eighteen. Motion to adopt. Only twenty-four dash eighteen.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eighteen. Resolution twenty twenty four dash nineteen.
A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Omni Tree Service Incorporated for on-call emergency tree service. We went out to bid for this and got, got one bid from our firm service provider, so.
They sent that bid number on?
I guess not. Directly and I, I sent it to, it went out through sites, the organization that have a lot of landscaping companies, um who's posted there on their site. I sent it out to anybody that we had doing tree work in the city in the last eight years. So went out to a lot of people, nobody, I guess maybe they're just not.
Now they don't want to be on the verge of urgency.
Pretty gateway who brought it up to me actually and said they would be interested, but then they declined it, so.
How was this rate compared with their previous?
It's very close, they didn't raise it, I think it was, it went from four six, four forty to four sixty or four twenty.
You're in English.
Was very, four forty to four sixty down, it was very similar.
Okay.
Yeah. If they're called correct.
Yeah.
Now, there's no retained out or anything like that, it's just an on-call or. As needed, hopefully we don't have a needed.
Rush to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash nineteen. As submitted.
All favor?
Aye.
Will adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash nineteen by you now, spoke. But just review Dave.
Okay. So really fun part.
So over the last uh couple of months, the. Uh the structure and the numbers put in the question, and I think. Uh what we come up with. Most than, with what we've been showing you the last couple of months, would be at the monthly report. Uh what we do, so we're going through it here. This. The plan is to, to have a, a public hearing and adoption of the budget on December fourth. And pretty much be comprised of this document, but, but the exchange. Uh and a, and a narrative that. Uh but we started off with some functions and policies. Get started with the budget, go through them, and if there's any. It's gonna be too slow, I'm gonna pick it up, maybe there's something you want me to slow down on. Uh so it's an overall conservative approach. Uh we wanna make sure that we have enough money in to, to provide funds for all of the costs incurred providing service. Yeah, we'll prove that, so we have plans for two thousand twenty five. Uh the revenues, we're not uh uh doing anything that would be extraordinary like protecting a lot of revenue to, to help. Make the budget balance or anything, but we're a conservative approach, both on, on both sides of the budget. Uh sales tax, we're looking at about inflationary impact of about three percent. We're, we're not looking at any significant changes in the, as far as the detail uh makeup in the city. We're assuming nobody keeps that, or assuming that nobody, but I'm saying with a large generator. I think we would know that thing. Uh we still have some uncertainty on the use tax, which is uh, which is uh started in two thousand twenty two, was pretty healthy in twenty twenty three. Kinda come down, so we, uh that's a kind of an area that we're teaching and I, and we always hesitate. For the sale tax. That sale tax is over eighty percent of the total. So that's one of the, we put a pretty good.
Now, three percent is a gain, not a loss.
Right. As far as. Um the expenditures, we have these, the, it's new to the budget, and that we're analyzing these cost centers or activities. And I've listed six there, there's actually seven of the road meetings. Uh I forgot to, to list there, but administrative, resident services, police services, park maintenance, debt service and capital. Those would be kind of like you would put a, a lot of cities would call their department. But, but, but you know, we don't have the most structure with a lot of police. It's, it's like, so these are what we think of as costs that's incurred in these particular uh activities. And then within those activities, we're also breaking it down into personnel, contractual services and commodity. Materials, mall equipment, that has. Uh and you'll see those as we go on. Uh we assume the personnel cost will generally increase about four and a half. Forty. Uh. And then we, we're allocating the maintenance and provides the wages differently. Before sixty forty, sixty percent road, it's at forty percent in the parks. We're now breaking that uh both wages into uh three parts. Uh equal part administrative, which is basically maintenance of this facility. Uh. The parks as another third and road as, as the, it's the other part of the, of those way. Uh. The maintenance worker is gonna be offered into the, uh charged parks. And in the sixty forty. Yeah, so that's gonna change, that's gonna cause some fluctuation or the movement of some of these costs. Like one month. And then the capital improvement plan that just got, had a work session and it counts the board meeting. Uh two weeks ago, this included, well, all those numbers are included in the schedule. Uh and in the, uh second last page. The uh details of capital. The transfers between funds. Uh the transfers for debt service in the past. Uh the debt service paid out of the capital improvement fund, and then sixty percent of the cost was transferred out of, uh general funds to capital improvement, how paid for that. Forty percent was transferred out of the park fund. Uh this year, we have just, what we're doing is just transferring sixty percent from the general fund to capital improvement. And in effect, capital improvement fund to take out the other forty percent, we're at four parks, which we felt that that made more sense than. The, for this building, uh that capital improvement fund to, to pay for that. Uh and then the last transfer, the other transfer is between the capital improvement funded road fund, road fund, there's three little, the way of revenues. So whatever deficit it might occur without a transfer is, would go, come from the capital. So um. Page three is pretty much an overview, a summary of all of the revenues expenditures. We have the five funds, like we've always had, the fund, dual lateral capital improvement, road, park to stormwater, the general fund. And the, and the funds itself are, are created to account for revenues that have specific purposes, that have. That, that are restricted to certain costs, such as the cap, uh the park and stormwater, for example. It has the, the sale tax from park to stormwater, uh sale tax must be used for park and related activity. Stormwater. So we create a fund, put the revenue in there, and then the expenditures have to adhere to the restrictions. So that's why we have funds. The general fund being one that, that can uh sort of basically hold restrictions on, on the road. So uh again, the, at the bottom of page three, there's a trend, kind of a trend, and. And as you can see, it's been a pretty flat, the way of um the blue line represents revenues. And the orange line is expenditures. Uh other than two thousand seventeen, when the expense of build this building, uh there's, it's pretty well, revenues and expenditures are pretty much equal. That's pretty much what we're projecting for two thousand twenty five with this budget. In fact, uh we're looking at an increase in total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in fund balances. So that if, if you look at the right end corner of the schedule, the table up there, uh we would check almost two point two million dollars in total fund balances. At the end of twenty twenty five of this budget, uh all the, uh for. Uh so. Uh page four, we get into uh looking at that, somewhat that of the sale tax revenue. Again, uh the table at the bottom shows the trend, and the colors uh represent the different uh. Forces of those sale tax funds. Uh. Uh there are six of them. Four of which go into the general fund, one percent, maybe local option. The property or public safety, sale tax, accounting, the funding and the use debt. The total in the general fund, we're looking at six hundred and seventy five thousand. Very comfortable with that number based on how, how it's coming in right now. Even looking at, looking at the top four or five generators, very safe. Uh there's very little fluctuation, other than distribution formula, but if you look at their actual returns and what they, uh what they report. Uh the revenues don't change. That's a pretty lot of home restaurants and, and road to these stories won't have a, a whole big fluctuation. Use or fluctuation, that's a whole lot of. And so uh both, I don't know if there's any questions on those. Uh in total, looking at about a three percent increase from what we project, two thousand. You see, if you look back at uh twenty twenty one, we were over thirty percent higher folks in the bank, the home. Part of the use tax, already lived in first. Grocery, grocery, uh that area, and inflation, inflation. It, replacing this groceries a lot, and, and I think that's certainly in some ways benefited the city and. So in all of these uh different line items and all these revenues, we have shown the, the last uh four years, uh twenty twenty, twenty through twenty twenty three, the actual amount that's happened. What we, it has to make twenty twenty four to be, and then what we have proposed. So on page five, we've taken the expenditures and looked at them a little differently, or kind of broken them down in some. Uh pie charts together here for the categories, the, uh the expenditure by activity of those pop centers. As you can see, are listed on the left, and then they're broken down into those categories we talked about, for personnel, contractual, etc. And so we can see that capital improvements is over a quarter of the budget, twenty six percent. And administrative is about twenty eight percent of the total. Debt service, nine percent, uh the police, ten percent, of the resident services. Uh eleven percent park, nine percent in road seven. Then we looked at these categories or expenditures. Personnel, uh contractual. And we see that forty eight percent of the total expenditures in this budget are for contractual areas, which is not surprising. And then you add on the capital to that, twenty five percent, contracted capital. To make the capital improve and how. So that's a big part of this for. Uh debt service, nine percent, personnel only makes up about seventeen percent of the total expenditure. Budget and commodities. A whole lot of, of toilet paper, fifty things purchased, uh those action things, one percent.
I just wanna point out that I think it's very interesting on the pie chart that all of the rest of our, when you take out administrative and capital improvements, which potentially make up more than half. All the rest of our categories are all between seven and eleven percent, so they're all almost very heavily divided, which I found fascinating. By accident, really, we don't do that on purpose, but it just worked out that way, that the rest of those costs are broken down pretty evenly across. My Dave's turning into kind of a financier, doing his fucking stuff.
Well, if, if this, if, if you're confused or you don't like this presentation, it's people fault, you like it.
That's true, it is my fault, I have, Dave was putting a lot of effort, making it the way, a format that I think is more user friendly and makes more sense, so thank you for that.
That's nice, this is. It myself, I hope. So um we go on to, to the, uh the revenues, we break the revenues down by funds, all of the areas, line items, categories, revenues. It's over the general fund. Sale tax, it's a large portion. We have nine hundred and twenty one thousand budgeted in revenue, which is slightly less than what we project for this year, and I think a big part of that is because. The insurance proceeds uh are in this year, about one course, projected. So if you look at the budget for two thousand twenty four, what we protect, it's uh around nine hundred thousand, so it's uh, you know, a little over two percent higher than what we. Budgeted for two thousand twenty four. Uh and pretty much the categories uh are. Pretty stable from what they are over the years. Uh and I, I made, uh like I mentioned earlier, the merchant license may be a little bit low, it's got a hundred thousand. Uh but if you can see merchant license. You have the property tax, merchant property tax, based on what the levy was. Pretty much uh same revenue. Twenty three, we got fifty two thousand dollars. We did. And uh that was the tax going into back like two thousand twenty two. And I would suspect there was a lot of lag in report of, of people reporting that were locally businesses. And new businesses probably have a lot of materials that they would have, uh supplies that they would have had purchased, startup. Uh that maybe that's why two thousand twenty three uh was maybe a lift there. Uh but we've seen it go down.
So this is primarily internet or.
It's, it's out of state personally.
Did that include commercial?
Oh, it's probably almost.
For example, schnitzers ordering their supplies.
Yeah, the stuff that they're not big selling, that they would, if they're buying it out of state, they would have, they would base that. And when you look at, you can look at the state sale tax, where the, it's being paid, but it doesn't, not very useful. The Amazon's paying it, you know, but you don't know who's generating, who's buying those goods.
Uh dividing it by six hundred. How many people we have, that's, that's a lot of ordering online.
Yeah, there's probably very little of it in the, in the residential, or the, yeah, it's also the, the generating that.
I just. I had a mayor meeting last week, I guess it was, and there was this. I just, I had, I had, I had a mayor meeting last week, I guess it was, and they were just arguing and arguing, should we do this? Shouldn't we do this? We're the only ones that have yet, have let youth tax. We're the only ones that have passed this.
Really?
Oh, no, there's, there's federal cities. I'm talking about within our three.
In the West County.
Oh, oh, oh. Kentucky field has, Baltimore has, Manchester has. They're beginning to realize.
Yeah, they're putting it on the ballot.
They're questioning whether or not they want to do it. They can't get taxed.
Yeah, because it is a new tax and it's, it's, uh, sales tax, generally when people think of sales tax, they're thinking people from outside the city are coming in and buying stuff and, and then paying the sales tax. You don't live in, what else would you shop at? This grocery store, you're bringing in like, no. A youth tax, either hitting a local merchant or hitting a local resident. It's not being paid by somebody else. And as we all know, the only fair tax on the, somebody else paying.
The problem, the problem they have, if you want to put it on the ballot, the wording confuses people and it looks as if they're going to be paying an additional tax. It's why it was a little easier for us to pass it, because we could make the word out much easier. Now they have tens of thousands of people that, that so, municipalities don't, don't have that in their laws. Who gets the proceeds?
They're, they're not, they're not paying it. They're not, but somebody would not pay it. I mean, they're paying it, they're paying a youth tax to the state. Uh, the county doesn't have any tax. So, uh, if the county would pass one for the, the sale tax that, that the city is part of, it would increase substantially the amount of, of sale tax that the city's billing. Uh, but they tried it, uh, on twice and put good tax. Uh, people just don't see tax, it goes up.
Yes, your coordinate is coming up.
It is, it, it has been, uh, it, it's starting to roll in and, and the cost of running the coordinate for all the, the increases. And it is, yeah, it's starting to pick up, virtually nothing before this year. Uh, and then interest on investment, uh, it's going to be strong, fifty thousand, we have F C E and, and often there's, uh, some interest on the, the long-term lease, the talent life goes into interest instead of, uh. Okay, so, uh, the other question from the general fund revenue. I was going to page seven, the other fund, gap improvement fund has a sale tax. Park groundwater, but have some fees, but on chart, it's the sale tax, yeah. The road fund, uh, gets money from, it was county, the county levies. Part of the county property tax levy includes a levy for local street maintenance. So the city gets back a portion of that. Then there's the oil fuel tax, because it's on a hope of the year, the city population. But, uh, the sense is that off the date, this increased the, uh, sale of the gap in the tax, like to ask. And then, uh, the tour lateral is the, the, that program. So those are the revenues of page eight. It's the, uh, start the expenditure by fund. The general fund has three of these activities, the park centers, the residential fund. The administrative, the resident services, park and police. And under administrative, you have personnel cost of a hundred ninety-seven thousand budgeted for two thousand twenty-five. It's up, it's, like we talked about, the facilities of maintenance being allocated, uh, to the channels on, such as this building, the maintenance worker. And, uh, and because of the turnover, uh, we have a little higher, uh, administrative wage that we expected to have this year. Uh, the lockers, uh, rate for the employer is going up from seven point nine percent to eight point nine percent to two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we have one, we'll start paying the lockers, we'll start paying them. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, that was pretty, uh, plenty of, no wages, that's why it's up. Uh, as far as the, the next category, administrative, is all the contractual areas. Um, includes utilities, uh, insurance, insurance that may have a little bit more in there than, and, uh, we've said to the past that insurance costs have been increasing, so, um, to make sure we had enough to cover, increasing the cost of insurance, uh. Uh, so we're, yeah, about ten, uh, a little over nine thousand more, totally contractual than we, in fact, have spent this year. As far as administrative contractual. Uh, so the most part of the individual line items are pretty much close to what they have done over the year. And there is, they want to talk about a lot of lines that are. You have the I P, that's what, still, it looks like, windows, various, uh, tenants, building, vehicles, water, the, uh, administrative events is the one thing that keep that in, we just, we just, we have the service as the, the annual. Appreciated dinner. The bowling, the, uh, maintenance of the, of the contractual, uh, there. Then as far as commodities, we have office supplies, or, or pregnant.
The contractual fees are, are you seeing an average increase, reach?
It's pretty much went individually on each line. So I just, but how is it trending or what does it look like? But yeah, it's always in the mind, uh, do we have enough to cover inflation? Some of these have, you know, you know, some of like, the auditor speed by a contract, it's, it's, uh, based on the contract that was awarded, uh, last year to there. Uh, some of the others, uh, had a trend, the I P, uh, the trend thing. But it's, um, that's always a consideration of, of inflation, but we try to look at it on an individual line.
A lot of them, like Dave mentioned, they have all their contracts, and so we knew what those contract numbers were going forward.
Well, as an example, we ended up getting thirteen point six percent. Would they be with new job, new contractor?
That I don't know. How, which, I don't know what term we are in, the contractor center needs an ongoing service. Big question.
This is an example.
Yeah.
It's been trending up a, a little bit there, and I, I guess I'm, I'm a lot of, often like, uh, uh, habit. But that's, that's three thousand, that was.
They do.
Yeah, it's, uh, I think.
One month, yeah, one month.
Do we pay it on a per visitor, per hour?
Per visit.
Per visit.
And it varies depending on if you're doing, over the inside out, or, you know, they're just doing.
Then, uh, the resident services that are included in the general fund, uh, we moved some of the, we put the events out of, out of the general fund over to parks. And, but, uh, sanitation, you know, controlling, again, complete vacuum are still in the, uh, general fund. Be those, yeah, they're contractual, but the, the. Police services are based on the, the talent. So the, the next, uh, page ten is the park and groundwater fund. And within, uh, this fund, we have three activities, park maintenance, resident services, and capital improvement. Park maintenance, uh, has personnel, contractual, and commodities. Uh, park salaries, as I talked about, that's where we have one-third of the maintenance. Supervising salary and all of the, uh, uh, parts of the, the all the wages of the, uh, maintenance worker presenting. And then the contractual items, um, are listed there, uh, utilities, uh, maintenance, uh, facilities in the parks, uh, the vector, which is vector cannot go, which is the, the, uh, east control, whatever, whatever. If you do the east, I don't know, uh, but that's.
The goose chase.
The goose chase, that, and that's where we, uh, that's part of that, the big, big piece of that line item. We have landscaping in there, we combined the two line items, put them up there. Park landscaping, park landscaping maintenance. So we combine that into one, for the park maintenance, and it's all, other landscaping abstracts. And then for commodities, we have the revenue supplies, all the equipment, uh, are needed there. The total mark of park maintenance is a hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred within the park groundwater fund.
Let me back that forward, that what we're buying, in that park tools and equipment, so we'll jump there.
And then, uh, the resident services, the, in the park fund, is, for the most part, they, they be all entirely the, uh, events. We have, uh, like you mentioned earlier, they added three events, the January event, March event, and November event. I didn't find those, it up out of the balance sheet. Uh, then we moved over into that, uh, from the general fund, yarder day, night out, chili cook-off, they're all, they're there.
Hopefully we use real eggs for the Easter egg method, seventy-three percent.
I don't think so. I don't think, maybe we're doing more eggs.
Uh, the other, I, I don't know, but it was, it was nine hundred sixteen in two thousand twenty-three, seven, I, 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 oh. And I think all the events are pretty much given out, but, but, but they're not the youth, they could, I guess, on the guy.
Yeah, that was just a round number. Really, this is the first time we have given the place in mind memory that we have given the park committee, the actual entire park budget and said, this is what you can work with. Instead of pulling out some of those for administrative, it, it never really made sense to me that we didn't let the park committee out of being, in charge of all those events. So I just, we didn't know exactly what those events, the new events we were gonna add, were gonna look like. I just gave them a round number of a thousand dollars per event and said, you know, don't go over that, obviously. But I think it, it is nice going forward that the park committee will have a better sense of the total budgets that they have. And then they can better allocate after this year, how much they want to spend for events. If they want to move some of this lot of money into like, or in the winter lighting and spend less on the Easter egg, or spend less on movie night, or whatever it is. Then I think that they should have the authority and leeway to make those suggestions. So that's kind of what I'd like to be going forward.
So, we're on page eleven, we have a few more of those resident service lines, actually, right? These, the memberships, uh, facility partnership, plus, plus membership, uh, that should be. Then we have gap improvement, uh, also the department, part of the gap improvement. And then, um, capital improvement fund has forty-five thousand dollars for the capital. To look at those, there's, uh, there's, based as far as the gap, the gap improvement. And the tax are listed on the bill. A hundred forty-two thousand, three dollars.
What's the balance of that?
I, I looked it up, just curious. Uh, so, the, the next one is the road fund. The road fund has road maintenance, resident services, gap improvement. The next one is park maintenance, uh, they have one-third of the salaries of the maintenance supervisor. Uh, then under contractual, then free bikes, pop home repair division, pop over other repairs. Uh, those free, uh, location. Landscaping bowling, uh, I'm sorry, right away, landscaping, bowling, contract, uh, utilities. I think it's fifty-five, that's really contractual. Uh, twenty-three hundred dollars, that's fifty-five. The total of a hundred, ten thousand eight hundred, I think. Uh, as far as the resident services, we have a lot of items that's numberable and, uh, we have a quick thirty thousand.
Fifty-three now.
Well, and bigger, thirty, you know, twenty-nine thousand back to two thousand twenty-two. And, you know, we didn't have much to win in, in twenty twenty-four, but there was a lot of, a lot of salt, a lot of that tanks. They had, uh, that, that pushing a lot of snow around. They, uh, and then the gap improvements, then touching it up, road fund, there are twenty thousand. Little, probably, like, about three, four, five thousand.
I need something for you.
Or in the road fund, or we're seeing that in, on park?
People are now, sometimes have a tree that falls in the road, if that makes.
I think that is actually, like, we have to take down a tree, right? Not, that's not emergency tree, we're not going.
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, we're, we, uh, we could, could be affordable on the other line.
I feel like it's because, um, and the reason why I say that is we haven't spent money in it because remember in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, we clarified the city's position on street trees in terms of what we would take down and what we would not take down. We basically clarified that street trees do belong to the adjacent private property owner. So we were not going to be in the business of taking down the street trees anymore unless they are, you know, park trees or something like that. So I think that is probably what that extent is, but I don't know for sure if that's where the.
Usually in the property.
Right.
And this, at the bottom of page twelve, we're still, we're, we're. That, that, even that's exactly number thousand, I don't think anything is really that going on. Have a place for it. The page thirteen is, is the detail of, of the budgeted capital improvements. We've discussed a couple of times, but, or, and, and. Yeah, that's, that's bottom show, break down, we're, those, for those projects we've been funded from. And then the last page is just a schedule, which puts all of those resident services from places. They're included in other parts of the places, but, uh, we would be good, because it's kind of a different area of activity of showing. Uh, they're gonna show those all in one place, refund, or four hundred, and then to do that resident service. That's part of the budget, the resident services, the total of a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. That's ten dollars to begin.
We offer a lot of great services for our city our side.
Those reports, amazing, very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so much.
It's beautiful, very, very arctic.
Yeah, I mean, they really put in a lot of effort, nearly my suggestion, but he did all the hard work behind the scenes to make it look as nice as it does, so I, I appreciate that.
He said, uh, any feedback?
Very good. Okay, discussion items, Merrimack Station Road Project, grant, application.
Can we talk about our last, uh.
TBA?
Yeah.
Spent some long on.
It's been a few weeks, that's true. I could get a little more information if you want me to, I talked to Chris, so, um. Russ and I met with all three of those, um, engineering firms, so I think you talked about it, with Latvian Cochran, um, TBA, and, uh. DBB.
DBB.
DBB, and Russ and I both had, I think that that's feeling about TBA, which is the last one to meet that with, and that their. Sort of, uh, take on the project aligns more with what the both of us and what we thought the board would want to see in terms of what we talked about for. Traffic calming, pedestrian safety, additional light animal roam, Merrimack Station Road. So I did, um, reach out to Chris, and he said they can have the capacity to take it on and that, um, they would recommend us. Perhaps go for an STP for and/or a TAP, which is a transportation alternatives program. Since a lot of what we want to do over there is pedestrian focused, so that's kind of a funding mechanism for pedestrian projects. So he said, you know, as we get more into the engineering and design, if you kind of figure out which program it might be a better fit for, and what we have to better change the getting. The grant funding for, so, and he did give me an estimate, um, he estimates fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for their services, which would be for the. Designing the plan and the preparing of the grant applications, which are due, the STP is due in February of twenty twenty-five, I'm not sure about the. Transportation P, I think it might be at the same time, but, so that's.
Is STP, yeah.
Surface transportation program, I think, the, right? Yeah, I think that's it, so one of them is more road focused and one is more pedestrian focused, and he said really this. The project, he described it to him, could qualify either way, so they have, it sounded like they have a pretty good relationship with the folks over in East West Gateway who. Um, you know, administer these grant programs, so they can kind of have a conversation with them based on the plan that we all come up with. They suggest to us and the board approves, to see what's going to do better.
Thing I like about it, so, while they're preparing the plan. They have the capability of bouncing some of the ideas off of the grant folks, get input. How change can make it a little bit more attractive, but, so, they, uh, they seem to have the right connections. They seem to be, uh, more open to some of our thoughts about pedestrian protection and calming. Whereas, one company didn't like it at all, said, no, this shouldn't think that, uh, but. I was most impressed by the TBA, what, what I think they can do, and. They, they didn't give us a real positive outlook, yeah, you're gonna get this, that they said. It really, this, this really needs to be, Merrimack Station needs to be part of the long-range plan, overall plan for the city. And so you're gonna need this information, so we could, they were totally suggesting that, go ahead with it. Let's come up with the ideas, the engineering, and we'll get that piece done, and it's not gonna be wasted. But that's the fifteen thousand dollars.
That could be to twenty.
So we're not successful, but we get that back. No, but that's engineering information that we will have, if we decide to go out on our own, for example, if we at least have the plans. Of what we might be on, on our lighting, uh, yes, we, yeah.
I think they were very frank that, you know, it, it might not be an easy road for us to get a grant, I think we're all aware of, being on board, how hard it's been for a city our size. But they also did have some strategies, um, in terms of maybe putting in additional money instead of going for an eighty-twenty match, it might be. Make it more attractive to ask for less money, because at the end of the grant cycle, they always have some smaller pot of money that are kind of leftover, if you will. So if there's a project, they want to give that money away, but it was, so there's projects where they need to give it away. That we might say, okay, we'll put in, you know, instead of eighty-twenty, we'll do a sixty-forty or whatever it is, and then that may. Get us that odd money, and at least it would be something for this project versus us self-funding all of this. I guess that's the, the decision that really needs to be made by the board, do we want to move forward, or do we think that it's such a long shot to even apply for the grant? Should we take the heck with it, you know, just call it part of our own plan, as kind of a.
I, I look at it as, we're gonna do something over it, and they're gonna come back with a lot of different. So there's value to that information, this, having, so I, I would like it to be a. Right, if you don't apply, you're not.
That's true.
And with their contacts and with their direction, they can, they could really approach us through this, or I think the other two could. They could do the application. They didn't seem to have contacts with any organizations to kind of guide them, give them some advice before we actually make this available. I feel some people would, would, on, on the west side of Merrimack Station, that, that, that curb that's considered ours. You know what I mean? This, I'm sorry, the east side, where the.
So east side gestures.
Like in front, for instance, which, yes, that's, that's.
Or, or, to the, you know.
We do only entirely of the roadway. So the full width of Merrimack Station Road is within the park, or, yeah.
That'd become a pan gesture, I guess.
Yeah, or Valley Park.
But the right-of-way beyond the curb, that's, yeah.
Um, beyond, so, you're talking about, I mean, I don't know that there's curb anywhere along, even up towards the shopping center, I guess.
That's all I'm talking about, uh, east side.
East, but.
The other words is there are right-of-way that's not paved, but still part, that's within.
Oh, that, I don't know.
You can, you can certainly look at the county side, but, yes, but. I don't consider it really.
Yeah, I don't know how hard it usually goes up there, but we only, prior to the roadway, I know that, so it won't bite shoulder, all of that, or.
But that would be ten point ten grand.
I'm sure that they must have that information part of the plan.
They would absolutely, to be able to do the designs, they're gonna share it.
Yeah.
Those are, yeah. So is there a motion to move forward with the TBA? Yeah, motion, move forward with TBA. Okay. On paper?
Bye.
Bye.
Relax.
All your church reports. My report is, uh, probably be reviewing, contract, the PBA. As I was in red, I don't have it.
Okay, so I have, um, yeah, it's. I, I added some last-minute things, so I apologize if you got a, the early version of the flip's report or the latest part of the report, so there'll be some things to add to what you see on the screen. So, um, I did, um, at the board's direction, I've been gathering some bits for cleaning services, both up here and at the park. And then, um, I still need to reach out to Harvey's for, for some additional cleaning services in the spring in order to free up, maybe supervisor time to do other tasks. So, um, I'm still kind of working on that, we, two companies so far, Paula and I have up here, um, and they, both of them have municipal charities, so I was glad to hear that. Both companies have had contracts with them, utilities, both clean park facility and the public like this, so.
They, uh.
Um, Corbus and Building Stars.
Building Stars.
Uh-huh. So far, and another third, and they had, I think both companies have reached out to us in recent months, it's, it we interested in service, so. Um, Paula, I've been working very hard on volunteer gift ideas, I think we mentioned this briefly, but I'll. Say again for the whole board is that we're gonna change how we do the volunteer appreciation, it's going to be more just about volunteers. So instead of doing the raffle baskets, we talked about doing individual gifts for our volunteers, so the people that serve on the committee and things like that. So Paula has come up with some awesome stuff, I mean, everybody can be very excited, stay within the same budget that we have utilized in the past. But this way, every single person who has volunteered for, um, committee or commission or whatever, will go home, so I think that's.
Thank you, people, that's what I'm saying.
We are not, we're gonna keep it to volunteers, yeah, so, yeah, because, well, for one reason is that, um, the rooms over at Bartley's notes are. Not that big, what are they, each full?
Fifty.
Sixty or?
Fifty, each fifty.
Fifty people, so that kind of limits on who we invite, and again, I think, you know, we, all those contractual services. The ones that we work with on a daily basis aside.
There's not volunteers.
Twenty, they're not volunteers, and, you know, the ones that we work with on a more limited basis, like crash service, things like that, bringing, pay them and. Part of their contract, and I don't, I don't think they expect to be appreciated like volunteers. So, that's the justification, if you will. Um, I did meet with a contractor today about the Crescent Road overlay and got very encouraging news, um, he felt like. We could not do the very thin overlay that we talked about, but he thought, just at first glance, that, uh, two-inch milling and then an overlay would get us maybe ten years. And he had some ideas on how to shore up the side of the roadway, um, so if you've been over to see Valley Parks, they made that they did. Past Boss Port on Crescent, they put that rock in all along the roadway, and he suggested that for that part where we do not have curb. He said that would go a long way in maintaining the integrity of that with property. So.
They did, you know.
Yeah, for, yeah, they did, it looks really nice, so that was in the US that I met with today, who has done, um, overlay in the city. I think our last full overlay was done by then, to them, I'm sure, many years ago, but, yeah, so I thought that was good news that we. Know that we might get, get ten years, but, well, we have to do something major on Prince of Prowess, so. Um, let's see, I, oh, last night, I presented our map plan to the Boundary Commission, so they had the public hearing, which is something that. Happens every six years, um, apparently last cycle, we, um, recalled our map plan, so we didn't even have one on file. But the reason behind it is to, um, have a potential plan for annexation, should we ever be required to do so. So Michelle from the Boundary Commission explained to me that there have been, um, different ideas floated about minimum populations for cities, things like that. So you wanna always have the option to be able to annex an area, and you do that through submitting a map plan every six years, and then. I went in front of the Boundary Commission Board and talked about why we chose the area that we did, um, you know, explained to them that we don't have any intention at this time. Of actually moving forward with any type of annexation, that we've never been approached by residents in that area or not in recent years, at least. For an annexation, so the both of the things that they would consider, so, it was just a short presentation, it's very nice, which is the Valley Park that there's. And then Davis County that there's, um, the parks that they want to keep unincorporated, basically. Uh, yeah, Valley Park has some overlap with the area that we would want to, but again, they're not in any kind of, um, they have no plans to move forward with any type of annexation. They're in the same situation that we are, they just want to have something, so basically, this is what we have in the next five years, if something were to come up, basically, are. What we have available to add in.
The overlapping area would be one that would send us an old, the, the fact. Now we'll talk about Hannah. We were thinking, we had to be, uh, much fifteen hundred populations.
Yes, yeah, so the area that we have submitted in the last, for those who haven't seen it before, it's the same map we've submitted the last three cycles, basically, the. Residential area, west of us, along Big Ben to Hannah and down to Crescent and back. Yeah, which includes the, um, nine-one emergency response center and then all those condominiums that are in that area. Um, the last thing is, for administrative updates, is the, that I enrolled us in the, uh, TIPS program, which is apparently a cooperative purchasing agreement. That is nationwide, I wasn't familiar with it, but Boss Lighting, who's the contractor we've been talking to about the lighting project in the park. Told me about it, and said it was a good thing to get involved in, it's pre-negotiated pricing on a whole host of different things. Uh, for government and it could be the only, so I applied for us, and now we are officially part of that program, so you can get best pricing on the lighting fixtures and things that people like to buy for. Um, let's see, for the events, Paula touched on the winter lighting, so we got that audited too, um, and we talked a little bit about the new events already that they have on the calendar. Um, for project updates, the Crescent, we are nearing completion, we're very, very close, which is very exciting. Um, I do think I will postpone the ribbon cutting till maybe, I'm thinking December second, on Monday, December second. Just so that we can really have the complete project in the, you know, it'll be very nice before that, and Lisa also asked me to put on it because she's going to be out of town, so. And she would like to be there for that, so.
Tell it to.
Tentatively, uh, Monday, December second, I'll probably keep it at like ten AM still unless anybody has a, I'm with, I don't. It can be anytime then, so if you have a preferred time, we can do it in the afternoon too. Let me know, you check your calendar and let me know. So they are very, very close though, and as of this Friday, it should look completed, all the concrete is in, uh, the paving was. Cleared today, I believe, I haven't gone over to check it, but I will in the morning, so there, there will still be a little bit of work. Down Crescent Road that needs to be done, um, and a few little, like, infill and some tear up of those yard, but it will be done soon, so. They have worked really, really hard to keep the deadline to come around.
They, they did it at four in the afternoon, when, turn the lights on.
They, they did it at four in the afternoon when turned the lights on, see something.
Yeah. Over there, you mean?
In the park, kind of dark.
Oh, yeah. Well, we don't have any lighting up there on Crescent. I want to do it on Crescent Road, so I'd like to do it during the day.
Well, I don't think it's a park light.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We do have a time for park lighting, yeah, that's it said. Okay, so, um, the last.
We're gonna do the rim cutting right there.
Yes, we are gonna do it right there at Golden Oak at the corner. So I'll put up some kind of. Russ and Chris, and we can all take a little, roll down the sidewalk. Uh, the Bully Lane entrance, BFA is finalizing the plans. I met with them to make some tiny tweaks, uh, to the plans, but, um, still the same ones that we've been talking about for over a year. Um, they're finalizing those, so do you have to do before the end of the year for construction next year? Um, we talked about STP grants and we talked about park lighting. They were waiting on, um, our TIPS number to be able to give us an estimate, but he's supposed to get something to be in a phased approach. So some things we could do this year, more for next year and potentially upgrades for the following year. So kind of be a multi-year project, probably, considering what we want to do down there. Any questions? That was a lot, sorry. Any questions about any of that?
Okay, comments, unless you've got something for the offensive neighbors, um, and not resident input as well. The worst thing was three signs in the yard in the right of way. Private residence, it's been there for several months, it seems like it's excessive. Just ask them if they did. That's what purpose of it is. The other thing is trailer, this park ton. Bully, never moves, they're for months, months and months. I've asked if they could at least move it back a hundred feet or something away from the intersection so it's not so visible, at least changes. The other thing is, okay, not resident playing about our restaurant. Excessive price of dinner. And they said that they felt it was quite excessive. They meant to order a bottle of wine for forty-two dollars. They were out of it, but they suggested that they substitute a seventy-two dollar bottle of wine. And they were very offended by that, and they said they'd never go back to the restaurant. So I'm wondering if there is any suggestion that we could.
No, I don't think we have any.
Meet with them. That's yours, I can't go. That seems like the very. That's all I have.
Yeah.
I would just like to thank you all for all of the sidewalk. I know that it's a long process and I know you guys will do a lot of trouble for that. Is it good? For the park side? Sorry, I know there's more to go, but I just want to thank you guys.
Well, we, we appreciate you thanking us, but we didn't do it for you.
On behalf of all of the widows. Thank you.
We do appreciate.
I'd rather to open up the YouTube. Paul about my son. Giving us love.
I want to know what the frog is for.
I don't know.
You might as well go ahead and, yeah, you might as well scroll through all the.
Let's go through each one.
Did I put it so?
Please, please do share your suggestions. It's a tenth of a mile fomer.
I was gonna say, if I can, if I can.
Probably just start, starting that long enough.
I love it, I think that's awesome.
The boy had numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm into it, for sure. Can we add that to the park for next year, if you can get a spring five K on the sidewalk?
It won't go.
Yeah.
About rubber shoe.
There you go. It's very flat.
How old is Doctor's post?
Doctor's post is ten years old, so probably really enjoying, if it's still on, that we're talking about right now.
Okay, with that, uh, take motion to turn. Yeah, lost your form, so, okay.